Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, April 25th, 2019, regular meeting of the school committee and public hearings. So I would ask for those who are in attendance here in the studio if you'd like to rise with us to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we are fortunate to have a number of people here in the audience that we will recognize tonight, but we're going to start, do we want to start with recognition since we don't have anyone here? Sure. All right, yes, so let's move right along to recognitions. We have a few of them. Larry Keen, who is the head custodian at Hopkinton High School, will be retiring. And even though he's not able to be here with us tonight, I did want to read his certificate of appreciation because he has been with us for almost 20 years and he does a wonderful job. So in recognition of your outstanding commitment to Hopkinton High School, this certificate is presented to Larry Keen. He's been with us from September 5th, 2001, to May 1st, 2019, and this is awarded to him on this 25th day of April, 2019. So Larry, if you do see the broadcast of this, I wish you all the best and a wonderful retirement. And I did the same this morning when I ran into him at the high school. Thank you. Our second one, I would like for Mr. Mike Hamilton to come up, please.
Which one of these seats?
One of those perfectly fine.
The lavish one.
So Mr. Hamilton has been invited here tonight because he has been awarded the Mary Margaret Moffett Memorial Teaching Excellent Award, and that is offered by the American Psychological Association. When I first met Mr. Hamilton, it came about because every summer, he has a group of psychology teachers who come together, and they're from all over New England and even further, and they all come together at Hopkinton High School. And they do that because teaching psychology at the high school level is kind of one of those interesting disciplines because it's sort of a singleton. If you're a math teacher or an English teacher, there is lots of professional learning for you, but when you are a psychology teacher or an AP psychology teacher, you're kind of out there on an island, and so you look for your colleagues to conduct your own professional learning. So before I tell any more about this, Mike, I'm going to ask you to talk about how NEETOP was founded.
You did a pretty good job of describing the need for psychology teachers to have high-quality professional development and trying to do it at as low a cost as you can. So for most of the psych professional development opportunities, there are national conferences that by the time you're invested in it, it's thousands of dollars to go to, which lots of people can't do, and they often end up at times of the year when you can't go. So when I was working with an APA Division Teachers of Psychology in secondary schools, one of our main goals was trying to find ways to create regional networks so teachers could come from New England, for example, and get together, network, and have good professional development at a reasonably low cost. And it's been wonderful we've done. This is going to be our eighth year of doing NEETOP at Hopkinton. So again, thanks to Hopkinton for allowing us to do it in the high school. But we've had, we've had great growth. We had 20, 25 people, 25 psych teachers from this area the first time we did it, and we've had as many as 75 teachers. I think our highest number of states where we drew participants from one year was 11, which randomly we had people from Texas and a couple from Ohio and Kansas. So it's been, it's been a wonderful opportunity. I think it's great for the district to host it, and I think it's been great for, for people, particularly in New England, to have one opportunity at least to get a great professional development day during the, during the year.
Thank you. We should be thanking you for that. You shouldn't be thanking us. Whenever you can put us on the map, we're appreciative. So I'll tell you a little bit about the Mary Margaret Moffett Memorial Award. Each year, it's been given since 1981, and there's one recipient each year. And the award criteria are effective and innovative teaching of scientific psychology, stimulation of student interest in psychology, evidence showing use of national standards for high school psychology curricula, and professional development. And I would just ask you to talk a little bit about how you meet those criteria and how you got that award.
Okay. So the award, the process started, I was nominated by a professor that teaches at Albion College in Michigan, who I work with on the national level at the AP psych reading. So I've done various things in, in the AP psych reading. And so he nominated me this year, and then the process is to get a number of recommendations and letters of reference from people who know what I do and know it well. And then the criteria that you talked about, particularly just a couple of them that, that I'd speak a little bit about, the participation and the student interest. We have, as you probably know, we have what may be the most inclusive AP psychology program in the country, and it's wonderful not only that it's inclusive, but it's also successful. Students do very well and seem to enjoy the experience, or at least they report they enjoy the experience. So we have a very inclusive program, which helps with, as evidence of, yeah, we have student interest, and we also have a lot of students that go on to major in, in psychology and then to go on for advanced degrees in psychology. The other one, the professional development piece of that, doing things like NEETOP definitely were, were a part of that. But I also, at present, I'm co-chair of the AP psychology test development committees. So there, there are a number of things like that at the national level that I'm involved with that certainly provided evidence, evidence for the professional development. And then in terms of the teaching, showing teaching of psychological science, that was a, just putting together a whole lot of lessons that we do and demonstrations that we do and, you know, using formative and summative assessments in ways that, that further build student understanding and, and development in their psychological knowledge.
So I guess I would sort of like to point out that when, you know, you take a math class, it's an AP course, you've had years and years and years of math building to it. When you take an AP English course, you've had years of building to it. But as we said, psychology is one of those singletons, and, you know, you have an awful lot of kids who are enrolling that to give you the largest high school program in the country. And I think it's important to point out that while you are teaching this thing to the singleton, kids encounter it for the very first time. Our mean score at the high school last year was a 4.77, one out of five. So you are doing an amazing job teaching that course, and obviously, you know, your passion is quite evident. I'll just tell you a little bit about what Mr. Bishop had to say. He wanted everyone to know that Mr. Hamilton teaches ABC, Intro to Psych, US History II, and that you are an incredibly dedicated, caring, talented, and student-centered teacher. You are a favorite among your students, well-respected among your peers, a leader in the field of psychology, and one of the founders of NEETOP. He's very proud of the fact that you have a conference in his building every summer, and we are all very proud of you receiving this prestigious award. So thank you for coming here tonight and knowing.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk with you.
It's an honor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It is an honor.
I feel like we should clap. Maybe we shouldn't clap.
We said something off in the audience. But it really, it's something I know that kids start talking about early on in their high school career of wanting to get into that class and what a phenomenal job you do of igniting their spark in the subject as a whole, but to go on and to have such high AP scores is amazing. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I've never had the opportunity to be in your class, of course, but my son did. And he still talks about what you, what you taught him. I think he's not a psych student, he's an engineer, but I think, you know, doing that, taking your class, it really opened up so many new areas of interest, and he has nothing but the highest things to say. So thank you for that and the stimulation that you give to the kids, and you really get them thinking.
Yeah, and it's, it's wonderful to teach. As you said, it's not a class where they have a lot of things that build up to it, but it is a class that you can make relevant every single day that you're teaching it and tying it to their lives, which is why I think you see, even though you're an engineering major, there's lots of psych involved in engineering and any other walk of life. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And congratulations again.
Thank you so much.
It's an honor. All right, so my next recognition goes to our national merit finalists. You can see that we have some students in the audience. I'm going to read the names of all of the recipients, and then I will ask you all to come up and say a little bit, okay? So, here we go. From the class of 2020, we have students who are going to receive recognition in the National Merit Scholarship Program of some sort. We have Cassidy Barada, Fletcher Clark, Anila Ason, Timothy Fargiano, Kian Vatahe, Hannah Ionelli, Megan Kalmbach, Max Lakasha, Kevin Liu, Alexander Matsukis, Amun Marada, Adveet Nene, Matvei Ortashov, Cody Ottinger, Thrusha Putaraju, Elan Rosen, Joe Wang, Sarah Weisenger, and Grace Ye. And then in 2019, we have National Merit Commended Students. They are Matthew Biancooley, Sarah Cahill, Matthew Dempsey, Priya Hedge, Ava Coravilla, Grace Lim, Matthew Long, Andrew Paleko, Tess Papagney, Claudia Stett, Jane Stillwell, Alexander Wojcik. We have Francesco Duca for the National Hispanic Scholar, and we had two National Merit semifinalists, Abigail Fisher and Sarah Kang, and a single National Merit finalist, Abigail Fisher. So congratulations to all of those students. And you know that the PSAT is the qualifying test for this, and so I'm going to ask you all to come up and just say who you are, and in a couple of sentences, just tell us a little bit about yourselves. Come right on over.
You can all come at once if you want. Yeah, it makes it easier.
You can do it. You may have to get a little bit closer so the microphone picks up your voice.
I'm Hannah Ionelli. I'm a junior at Hopkins High School. I play on the Hopkins and Phil hockey and hopping lacrosse teams, and I'm very honored for this award.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I'm Grace Ye. I'm a junior at Hopkins High School, and I run track and I do figure skating, and I'm really honored for this award, so thank you.
Congratulations.
I'm Adwait Nene. I'm also a junior at Hopkinton High School. I enjoy playing in the band, and I'm also pretty honored to receive this commendation.
Congratulations.
I'm, I'm Max Lakasha. I'm a junior. I'm a captain of the football team. I'm very proud to receive this award.
Congratulations.
I'm Sarah Weisenger. I'm also a junior. I do dance and like swim and stuff, and I'm honored to get this award.
Fantastic. Yeah, we are honored to have you here tonight. When you, you know, take the PSAT, you are among the highest achievers, and we don't just mean in Hopkinton, we mean among all of the test takers in, you know, the United States and elsewhere. So this is really quite an honor, and we are happy that you are here.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to all of you.
Very big deal. Thank you very much for coming. I know, I'm having trouble too. I usually go on the audio. I know, it used to, but it's. And I'll just mention the three students who won the Alpha Mega Awards. Okay. And then our last recognition tonight, about a week ago, we were all in the Hall of Flags at the State House, and our Hopkinton Middle School Girls Chorus was there to perform the National Anthem in both, the American National Anthem in English and the Greek National Anthem in Greek. But the excitement of that evening, I think, is that we had three middle school students who were recognized for the essays that they had written, and those students are Ashwath Sridhar, Anush Kadair, and Iona Salivas. So I did want to mention them as well under recognitions, and I think that those are all of my recognitions for tonight. Quite a few of them.
Some good ones, yeah.
Yes. Yeah, great night for that. So at this point, I would like to open the public hearing regarding our strategic planning. I don't know if you guys wanted to speak to that in addition to student council stuff, but I do not see anybody else here from the public. I don't know if anybody on the committee wanted to speak to the strategic priorities. Not required, but I figured it's a public hearing.
Could we, could we let the, that these folks give their report and then just keep it open for a little while?
We can. We can keep the public.
That way, we don't have to keep these. He told me he's studying for an enormous amount of AP exams coming up, so I was feeling like maybe he might want to get back to that.
Come on up. Which AP exams are you studying for?
I'm studying for AP Calc, AP Lang, AP Chem, and AP US History.
Wow. Yes, you better get this.
Let them go.
So my name is Will Dyan, and I'm a junior.
I'm Cole Weemishad, and I'm a sophomore. I'm both on student council. All right, so starting things off, going back in time a little bit to before vacation, we had MICA hosted at HHS. The orchestra, chorus, and band all performed for the first time in quite a while. They received silver medals, which is very good. We had a mini-college fair for the sophomores and juniors to attend. It went well. The seniors had their 50 days to graduation dinner, and also this year, a record number of senior projects with 100 students. I believe the previous was 48?
Forty.
Forty.
Forty was the previous high?
Yes, so immense growth in our senior project program.
Additionally, another program that we're proud of at HHS is our Unified Sports Program, and they had their first home meet yesterday, and there was a good, a good number of people attending that, so that was awesome, see people supporting their classmates in that sport. Additionally, tomorrow morning is the Hiller Day, but in the cafeteria, we have our collegiate athlete breakfast. So for seniors who are, who will be playing sports in high school, or in college, there will be a breakfast for them. Additionally, another exciting thing at HHS is our robotics team is in Kentucky for Robotics Nationals, so we're super excited about that, and we're excited to see how they will do in their competitions. Additionally, this May 2nd, we have another college fair coming up, again, for the sophomores and the juniors. And finally, on Friday, May 3rd, we have a B-Free Spring Jam event, which is a really positive, for those who don't know. B-Free is a club in which they host events for students to gather and socialize and to be substance-free. So I've been to a couple, and they're, they're super fun events, so we're excited for that. And finally, the BPA, the Business Professionals of America Club, will also be heading to Nationals next Wednesday, and they'll be going to Anaheim, California. So it'll be pretty cool to see how they do as well.
Pretty exciting.
Yeah.
You guys are all over the country.
Yeah, we're quite busy at HHS.
There's a lot going on. There is, but it's great, the diversity of different things that are going on. Yeah, that's fantastic. And in the midst of all the AP studying for people.
I know.
Right? That'll be you next year, right?
Yes.
Yes, it will be.
That's what you got to look forward to.
So excited.
We'll make sure you go first next year, too. We'll make sure we go first.
We'll look out for you.
Yeah, exactly. How generous. Right, I know. If we can help, yeah.
Good luck with your 47 APs.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you for the report, too. It's good to hear all the good things going on.
Any other questions?
And it's Diversity Month at the high school?
Yes, it is. Yeah, so Diversity Club has been doing certain events, so that has been pretty cool to see as well.
Yeah, that's great.
Lovely. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Have a good rest of your night.
Thank you.
Thank you, you too.
All right, we will swing back then into our public hearing on the strategic priorities. If anybody had anything they wanted to.
I have no internet connectivity. I know that that should have been taken care of earlier, but backstage is not working.
Robot B-9 is the, is the actual network.
That's okay. That changes everything. There we go. Thank you.
Just because it's really hard to see that from here. That would, but I believe that's probably able to, they can see it.
Oh, is that what it is there?
Our viewers at home, I believe, can see it.
Yes, it's right there. Oh, I got the I problem. Bob, Bob, where were you five minutes ago?
Closer, closer. Closer, Bob, closer.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob.
Wi-Fi.
Thank you. We're just trying to get you on camera, Bob.
He knows for the camera.
I know. Appreciate your help. Oh, this is really crazy. It worked.
Well, I'm excited about the strategic priorities. I'll start the conversation. I think, I was really excited to see how this came together. I know a lot of work went into it, and it's kind of nice to see it's crystallized into the list of priorities. You know, I was struck sort of at the high level, you know, sort of the plan for enrollment growth, all the sort of pieces that need to be put in place and worked on to support the other two columns is kind of how I looked at it. And the other two columns, you know, I think are spot-on in terms of valuing the individual, but also maintaining that focus on the community. And there's always that sort of tension, it's sort of a push-pull, you know, are we prioritizing, you know, individualized learning or, you know, anything specific to one person, or are we maximizing for the, for the whole school? And I think we work really hard to do both, and I think it's exciting to see them equally placed in the strategic priorities. So that was great. I really liked, in the second column, the emphasis on growth mindsets. I'm really, I'm a big proponent of not being afraid to try things and fail and grow and learn, so I loved seeing that in there. I think it was ambitious, and I like it, that we had build budgets that propel innovation. I know in the midst of all our growth, it's easy to just think about just getting by and somehow keeping an eye on innovation. By putting this top, like right here in the strategic plan, I think is important. It's going to be challenging for us to figure out how to do that, but I think it's important to keep it on the radar and keep focused on it. So that was great. And the only, the only thing on here that, you know, I think I had sent you a comment too, that was hoping to get eventually more clarity on, was around ways that we can improve on the bottom of the green, the communication, the growing the partnerships between families and schools. It's a really important bullet, and there's a lot, there are a lot of different ways to go about that, so I'm excited to see how we work at that.
Yes, and so, you know, just, I guess to sort of illuminate the conversation that we've had electronically, one of the things that Mrs. Fargiano had said is that her own experience is that we are very good at doing that on the micro level, and I agree. You know, when parents call us with a concern, we're really responsive to that. Principals are always sending information out, and there's a problem with an individual child, we pick up the phone and, and all of that. But I do think that on that macro level, there's a whole lot that school professionals know, teachers know, principals know, central office administrators know, and it would really be nice to start to share that information with people who are sort of thirsty for it. So I think that that's an excellent goal for us in the future.
Oh, that'd be great.
Yes, I like that.
And I think, you know, your team, the admin team, the teachers, the subject matter leaders, we have so many sort of thought leaders who have really put a lot of time into mastering their disciplines, and, you know, if you have the occasion to kind of ask a question, you know, in the hall or when you see them, you realize, wow, there's a whole wealth of knowledge there. And sometimes I always feel like, wouldn't it be great if the whole community could tap that? So if we could find some mechanism to connect some of that professional knowledge and perspective with the community, I think it'd be great.
Yes, and I think maybe one vehicle for that would be the new website. When that is launched, that might, yeah, we've got a lot going on. There's a lot of balls in the air. But yes, I think that that would be really good, you know, the, the website was sort of another conduit, right?
Good job.
Just two comments. I really like all the goals, and I hope that we can make real inroads into each of them. Diversity in particular interests me as it connects to this communication and stakeholder partnership, because I think the schools do such a wonderful job of acknowledging and celebrating student difference, and I hope that we can take that acknowledgement and celebration and spread it out across town so other town departments and officials understand the different kinds of difference. Okay, that was repetitive, but you know what I mean.
Yes.
Difference and ability to, and to understand before judging. So connecting those two would be really important to me. I also like honoring advancing diversity awareness and as it applies to curriculum, but also thinking about increasing diversity of staff as part of that. And I know it's tricky. I know it is, but the more I read, the more the research tells me that students benefit from having teachers who look like them. You know, simply put, they really do. They feel more confident about themselves, so I look forward to our conversations about that in the future.
All right, well, what I appreciated most about it is being at that public forum and seeing the chart paper with all the, Alan furiously scribbling as people gave out their suggestions. I feel like that all of those pieces were put together, and I don't think anything's missing. So I feel like it really speaks to what the, the folks who came to that forum were really looking for. And, I mean, you know, as everyone has already said, that seems to speak probably for the community in general. I can't imagine, I mean, I'm sure someone could come up with something else, but this is really, this is like at the core of all the things that the community is looking forward to, so I think it's great.
I echo what other people said, but I also really appreciate the readability of this and how it is, you can look at one page, but it's.
It's like 10,000 times better than a 40-page document.
Right, 10,000 times better. It's clear, I like the way it's, the whole thing is done.
Yep. And I've, I know some folks not on the school committee who looked at it, and they were like, so much easier to read, you know? And I'm like, go figure, one page, even with colors, so you can kind of draw your eyes to different sections. Yeah, my husband's like, that's how every strategic plan should be. Isn't that how the last one was? I'm like, no, no, it wasn't, so, yeah.
But in the ease of reading it, I think will get more people involved in understanding what it is.
Yes, and I just hope that.
It is one of the outcomes, I really do.
Right, and it's an easier reference, too, if you're using it to guide whatever budgeting or whatever it is. You don't need to sift through 40 pages of, of language, you're looking at one. Pick your color. Do you ever look at a green? You look at a yellow? It's much easier.
So what are the next steps from here? So what will become of this document, there will be a very broad-based district improvement plan, and from that district improvement plan, each of the building principals will build their school improvement plans. When we get the district improvement plan draft up and running, it will come here and, you know, certainly we can do another public hearing for people to come and take a look at that as well. Because under each one of these broad categories, there will sort of be those kinds of action steps, like how is this actually enacted, how will we manifest at our level, at the building level? That's important. Okay. Great. All right. So at this point then, I would seek a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Amanda wants that. No, you go ahead, go for it.
All right, so motion by Jen?
Second.
Second by Amanda. All those in favor? Aye. And the public hearing is closed. Thank you very much, and thank you for all of the work that went behind.
Yeah, it came out really, really well.
So that brings us into reports, and item B is financial report by Ms. Rothermick.
Thank you. As you can see from the cover page, in summary, we're still running a positive variance at this point in time. A couple of things have changed. The payroll, not so much. The payroll has stayed relatively the same as the last time, but within the expense, you'll see a couple of things that I have increased. One being legal. I anticipate our legal budget going over between now and the end of the fiscal year. And the other one are the color copiers. As, as we renewed our lease for some of our copiers and looking for more efficient ways of printing and more cost-effective ways of printing, we're really moving toward, moving people to print to copiers and getting away from the individual printers, which are much more costly to maintain. One of the things that we still need to get on top of really are the controls around that. So that will be more of a push for next year. This was really, here's the copiers, please use them as we take away your individual printers. So that'll be something for, really changing a mindset and for, for staff to get used to. So that's, that's what those two really are the changes. And for utilities, as we start to creep away from the heating season. And for utilities, as we start to creep away from the heating season, um, you know, we'll start to understand where we can come under budget, mostly in, in the heating. So I believe at this point in time, all the boilers have been shut off at the schools. So while we get warmer mornings, um, you know, I think the buildings will still stay comfortable, but that will continue to save money for us as well.
I forget, do we have air conditioning at Marathon?
Do we?
Marathon, yes.
So that's still, that'll be an interesting unknown, right? To see what that ends up running.
Yeah, I mean Marathon is, is still an unknown.
Yeah.
Because last year, we were in the commissioning.
Right.
So you're running it full-tilt. So this will be the first usability, but at the same time, we're still exercising in, in getting those controls.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, so you have a building management control, so you still have to work through the bugs of that. So, so Marathon, I anticipate probably two years of experience before you really get an understanding of what that building will run.
Okay. So with the air conditioning, it's sort of the philosophy, philosophy behind Marathon that it's just kept at one, kind of trying to keep it at a constant temperature? Or did, in the warmer months, do they try to offset with opening the windows, for example? I don't know.
Well, what you, with the building management system-
Right.
-you're setting a temperature control. So you're setting that comfort zone. And so if it's, in, it, once you turn on air conditioning-
Right.
-if the room temperature gets hot, you know, in the spring, you're probably opening a window, but as it gets more intense-
Okay, that's, so that it, it's not just constantly triggering on that there's some judgment being made of-
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
That was the answer I was hoping for, but-
Yeah, so I mean, now that we've turned off the heat, we have not turned on the air.
That's, that's good. Thank you. That is exactly where I was going with that. Thank you.
We're trying to take a pause on utilities for one.
I'm in favor of pauses.
Yes.
Mrs. Rotherick, can I ask you a question about the legal budget going over? Because I'm sure people listening might want to know why that is. I mean, can you say anything more about it?
Uh, I mean, most of it is really confidential, so there's, there's not much you can say. But, you know, it, um, year by year, it's hard to determine exactly what may come up during the year.
Okay.
So it, it can be a variety of things. It can be, um, staff issues. It can be student need issues. It can be, um, you know, just a, just a variety of things that can come up. So it's, it's hard to determine on an annual basis what that will be.
Okay. Does it tend to increase year by year?
If you look at it, there really is not a pattern. If you look at the last five years, it, you know, it goes up and, up and down. Last year, I would say we had a lot of struggles with free of information requests that cost, you know, that ended up with legal review as well. So, you know, things, things like that, it just, it's a, it runs the gamut. It's hard to say what exactly is going to be the pattern.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
And contract negotiations. My, my recollection was we cut the legal, we reduced legal from last year to this year. Is that accurate?
No.
Okay.
No. Yep, we, we ran over in legal last year as well.
Last year.
But again, if you look at the, the last five years, um, you know, our budget is not completely out of normal. It's just some years, some years we hit it, some years we doubled it.
Well, in some years, we have significant contract negotiations that are heavy in legal fees.
Right.
So. All right. Question? Okay. So good answer. Ready? Is that? Yes.
Okay. So I just have a couple of, some school-based things for starters. This slide, the two things that you say on there were sent to me from Deb Pinto and John Parker, both middle school PE wellness teachers. And they have, you know, as they do every year, this kind of workout stuff that they do before the kids actually go and take the MCAS test. But this year, the kids actually got the, "Why do we do this?", the "Changing Your Brain" slide, which I really liked. So I wanted to incorporate it here. So it talks about the chemicals that are released in, in your brain when you, you know, start to physically move and what those outcomes are on, on sort of learning and your demeanor and all of that. And I just thought that was such a nice way to, you know, kind of get kids to think about moving and learning and the relationship between the two. Did I need to? Nope. We, also, we had gone to the Boston Marathon meet ceremony. That's where we had our three students, Ashwath, Anushka, and Iona, who were recognized there. In the bottom right, you can see, uh, former Governor Mike Dukakis, who was there and, for a man in his eighties, his speech was quite delightful. And then above that, you can see our Hopkinton Middle School Girls' Chorus. They did a beautiful job singing. And you can see the Mayor of Boston there with, uh, five esteemed colleagues. One of whom is our own school coody chair. This is the Elmwood Canyon Runner Day, always exciting. You can see the Kenyans, you know, dancing with the kids. You can see the part where all the confetti goes off. It's just so exciting. I mean, you watch those children and it's just sort of pure joy. You're so excited. And here is the Unified Track Home opener that, and, um, so Bob can actually play that video. I can't get it here.
When they make the music, it's so exciting. It's so good. One of those things, just so emotional. It's very marching.
And I love that they, uh, they recognize the other team crashed in the DVD. Did they do that again this year?
Yeah, they did. They came through as well. Yeah. Really nice. And so now we get to the part where I have just a little bit of my goals update. This is a reminder of what the five goals were. To establish a three-year strategic plan for the Hopkinton Public Schools. To build the repertoires of administrators, faculty, and staff, and cultural sensitivity and diversity with the hopes of ensuring greater social and psychological safety for our students. To build my own repertoire as the district's instructional leader through participation in the NISIP program. To enhance reading and writing instruction at the high school for special educators and special education students, especially as students prepare for the revised MCAS test this spring, which they have already taken. And to develop a budget reflective of students' learning needs as well as the expanding population in the district. I just have a couple of slides that go with these goals. We've already taken a look at that one. So this was really exciting for me. Jen and I went to hear Zaretta Hammond speak, and she is the person who wrote that book that we had done as a group over the summer, culturally responsive teaching. And it was interesting for me because when we were going through the process of creating the strategic plan, I can remember being in a, a group where we were talking about culture and diversity. And what emerged from that group was that we're really functioning on two levels. One is that sort of social level where kids are interacting with each other in our buildings. But that second level is, how do we adapt our curriculum so that it has, it's reflective of social justice and conscious of, you know, who our learners are every day? And so when we went to hear Zaretta Hammond speak, she said, "You have to think about this actually at three levels." One is, you look at it through the lens of multicultural education, and that's where we're sort of celebrating who each person is. And then you have to think about that social justice education. And then finally, we get teachers to a place where they are able to participate in what we would call culturally responsive education. And I really liked how she had broken those things out, three things out. And it just made a whole lot of sense and she had very nice bulleted pieces. And she said, "No, not one of these things is more important than the other. There may be a sort of continuum because you don't get to that third column, maybe without a lot of readiness in the first two columns, but all of that work is equally important." I thought that was really nice, given the fact that, you know, right now at our high school, we have lots and lots of people, actually all of our schools, doing a lot of the multicultural education and some of those social justice pieces, right? So really, that third tier for us will be culturally responsive education. She talked a lot about recognizing the dominant narrative, and I know you probably can't read that, that well from here, but she talked a lot about how the dominant culture is usually invisible to those people who inhabit the dominant culture. But that kind of got me to thinking about how the majority of our teaching force is white and female. And, you know, what, things that she said to us about that is, that means that people who are white and female and in places of power really, need to start thinking about how they can, you know, control the education that's happening in our schools and become very aware of that dominant narrative. She, you know, she had talked about how that's more important really than thinking about bringing in sort of cultural others to teach because this action can happen right now and that action will happen over time.
Right.
And then finally, that notion of reframing deficit thinking. And I think that we do that all the time and we do it really unconsciously. We, you know, will think about, you know, saying things like, "Oh, I don't think those kids are ready for that. My kids can't do that. It's not developmentally appropriate." There's sort of a whole litany of things that, that we use, but a lot of those comments really are deficit-oriented. And I think we have to become very conscious of what it is that we're doing every time we say that.
So, I don't, can you say it again? What do you mean, what, what do you mean when you say it's deficit-oriented? Like the deficit? We're thinking a student has a deficit or we're-
Well, it's sort of deficit thinking, that, yeah, that you sort of think that a kid is not able to do something that maybe that child really is able to do.
You're projecting a deficit. You're assuming one exists.
Exactly.
Okay, I got you. Thank you.
And that last bullet, where, you know, notice and name the deficit-oriented comments that reinforce negative views of certain student groups or certain families. And then this slide is one that I will be, and it sort of does relate to the goals in the sense of, you know, how does that play into the budget that we have built? And the students who are coming into our district. And I will be revealing this slide again on the floor of town meeting. Just so you can sort of see an update about where we are, on 417, I filled in another column so that you can see the numbers that are there. The high school has stayed the same. The middle school is up six. The elementary schools combined are up 24. The preschool is up 10. Our out-of-district placements have come down and our vocational school attendees have remained the same. So of the 103 kids that we anticipated would be coming into our schools, and we did that anticipatory piece sort of in January, right, when we were creating this budget, of all of those students, 37 of those kids are already sitting in our classrooms. They are here, they're enrolled, they're being taught. So, you know, doing the math, you can see that we're 66 students away from that target. But what has happened is, when a family knows that they're moving into Hopkinton, they can go into Power School and start the registration process. And, well, if I had my next slide, which I, I don't have, but I will for town meeting, right now you can see that we have about 32 kids who have already started that process. In reality, 35 have, but this hasn't been updated for a couple of days. So we've gotten three more just about recently. So really, our wiggle room right now is somewhere around 30 students. And we know from past history, how many kids have enrolled in our schools over the summer in the last couple of years. I think believing that only 30 kids are going to move into this district is, you know, absolutely misguided thinking.
Especially if we had over 100.
Last summer.
Last summer.
Yeah.
I hate to ask this, but do we know yet of the 20 some, whatever, the elementary's 20-some odds, where they landed? They didn't all end in like fifth grade or anything, did they?
No.
There were some already tight.
Good question.
If I had sent this in just a little bit later today, we would have those numbers in this presentation. Grade one has five, grade two has five, grade three has three, grade four has six, grade five has one, grade six has three, grade seven two, none in the eighth grade, seven in the ninth grade, one in the 10th grade, one in the 11th grade, none in the 12th grade.
That's not a bad-
No. That's a pretty good distribution right now.
That's a curious thing about that eighth grade. That was the only grade, because it would be this year's current seventh grade, correct? Is that the way that-
Yes, that's it.
So that was the only group that did not grow-
Last year.
Last year.
Yes.
Interesting.
So our numbers are approaching Westbro's numbers, aren't they?
They are, yes. Yep. We're right there. Yeah.
And how much do they spend per pupil? I know you, you've given us that data before.
I'd have to look to see what theirs is. Ours is 14,557, I think.
Yeah, I think theirs is more.
And have they released yet the more recent?
As of last Friday, the next round of per pupil expenditures had not been released. I'm kind of hoping that they will be before town meetings so that we can see if it has in fact gone down. It would be very disappointing if the number went down.
We're getting crowded.
I feel like we should start this at the beginning of the meeting and then bring in all those positive recognitions we have. It's like a downer, right?
But everyone at home is asleep by now.
Well, I don't know what we can do to increase our viewership.
Leave a couple quick fingers at the end.
I have some thoughts. I'll keep them to myself.
It ain't even May yet.
Yeah. That is, that is concerning, all kidding aside, that, just where we're at.
Yes. Drastic.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is that, do you have more? I didn't want to cut you off.
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
That's more than enough.
That is more.
Thanks, we're full.
So that brings us into the school committee chair report. And I have approved the Payroll Warrant S-19021. The payroll warrant has been included in your packet. I have also approved the Accounts Payable Warrants 19-088, 19-089, and 19-090. The warrants have also been included in your packet. So the school committee office hours, I think I sent out the email about. Mina was able to secure a time at the Senior Center on next Thursday, May 2nd, from 9:30 to 11:30 in the morning. Uh, you know, I don't want to put you all on the spot, but if you would like to take time to be there for some of that, we can break it up in shifts as we've done before. I think it's a great opportunity to be at the Senior Center right before we go with our budget presentation at town meeting, because I think a lot of folks at the Senior Center will have questions that they would like answered about our budget. It gives us that opportunity to not just go out and have goodwill in the community, but to be really useful to people who are concerned, confused, or excited about our budget or any combination thereof. So, is that, then I also had a couple of other things. It was a busy time for the last couple of weeks. We are approaching town meeting. The stabilization fund went through the Board of Selectmen as the, the document that it's also available on the town website, but the one that we all have seen that has been going around along with the motions. So that will go on town meeting floor and we will, I think, probably want to get some education out there to people around that, just because it's, I think, probably a new concept to people who haven't been following us closely. The Legacy Farms North bus situation on that road has come up a couple of times. So just, what I'm, I'm, you know, working together with the town to look and see if there's going to be the opportunity to have a meeting with the builder in that there would be an invitation extended to the schools to sit and to hear and kind of be part of that meeting. So that's, that's where that is right now. I don't have a date on that right now. The Visions Training, which is the inclusion and diversity training that we had talked about a few weeks ago, I had, I don't need the dates right now, but the one week that we had been looking at was the week of July 22nd. If that's not good, and I know that does not work as well for you, if, it might be easy if we could just, if you send me your dates that definitely won't work, like if you know you're going to be on vacation, and we could try to avoid around that. So it's exciting though. It's really rich stuff that we're going to talk about. Talking about historically included and excluded groups, talking about things that would inform policies that we're doing, what it's like when you're treated as less than, really a number of units. We did, I think, very well. It'll be a day over the summer training for seven hours. We'll have lunch together with the Youth Commission and with, I think Colleen Souza is going to go, I'm not sure if the new youth, youth and family services director is going to be there as well. And then there will be a couple of hours follow-up probably in September or October just to kind of finish up the units on that. So, that, that I'm excited about. So, that's all I have for the school committee chair report. Do people have liaison reports that they would like to do?
I have one.
Excellent.
At the planning board on Monday, the citizens petition, I think it, for a moratorium on growth in the town is in some limbo, but what they did suggest and present to the planning board is a growth study committee. And they were sort of working through what the charter of that committee might be, but it's essentially to research the impact of growth in the town and try to develop a more proactive plan to address that growth. So, that was a good, interesting discussion. It was pretty much Deb and Amy that were spearheading the effort. And so, they're looking to figure out who they want to, how big of a committee they'd like to, to have and how, who they want to populate that committee. So, they, they sort of had a pretty diverse set of ideas, but the school committee was on pretty much everybody's ideal list, you know, school, police, fire. And then there were some other thoughts about chamber of commerce or conservation committee, you know, open space committee, historic district. The books were sort of all across the board on that, but definitely school, police, fire was on that list. So, that is a work in progress, but I think that that's, you know, when Amy and Deb brought that citizens petition, I think it at least sparked finally some action into, you know, like let's take a real look at what's happening with all of these new homes that are being constructed and, you know, the sort of tricky situation it puts all of the public services in. So, that's, that's good. And even if the petition is, is not necessarily brought forward or whatever happens with the petition, I think that the, the formation of the committee and getting some information out there and maybe saying, look, we got to be more mindful of how much, how much new development we authorize in our town, thinking about social services or public services, rather. So, anyway, that was good.
So, Jim, was DPW on that list?
It was on some people's list.
Like water and sewer.
Yep, DPW was on that list, yep. I don't know if I already said chamber of commerce, they were on that list. So, you know, to try to balance off sort of the effects versus the financial impact on the town of minimizing development. So, anyway, I, there's no, there wasn't any final sort of decision made, but it's a good, definitely a good thought. There was lots of other things going on, but they didn't seem to directly affect the schools as much as that one, so we'll go with that.
All right.
Should I?
Yep.
So, Mina and I met with Patricia Duarte. Is that how I pronounce her last name or is it Duarte?
I thought it was Duarte, I'm not 100% sure.
All right, I'm not yet. Well, I've already embarrassed myself publicly about that, so Duarte. Because she's done some diversity awareness training with the town. And it's, you know, I love what the school is doing with diversity and a lot of people have it on their mind that we need to raise consciousness, but I know myself as a slow learner that I need as much teaching as I can possibly get. So, I like visions, I want the visions training, but I also would love to learn something from Patricia. She taught me a thing or two in our hour-long conversation and mortified me about the language I've been using. She didn't intend to mortify me, I felt self-mortification. Is that even a word? I don't know. So, Mina wanted us to form a subcommittee on diversity as part of the school committee, not in contrast to what's going on, but as a complement to, just so we can pursue further research. When I want to find out about something, say a play by Shakespeare, I don't just read Harold Bloom on Shakespeare, I read a variety of critics. Same thing with diversity and consciousness raising. I want to hear what visions has to say, I want to hear what Dr. Kavanaugh is bringing to the board, and I'd also like to poke around and find some things out myself. Great. So, I think Mina would like us to ask permission to form a subcommittee.
So, I think we need to put that on, post that on the agenda before we take action on it. I think that's certainly something we can put on our agenda. Thankfully, we get to meet again next week, so.
Oh, joy.
If there is space on, I can talk with Mina in terms of where it makes sense to do with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a procedural question. If one wanted to suggest a subcommittee, like Mina does, would she draft a, a proposed charter, like admission statement or whatever it is that we had to do for...
So, yes, so it, before we approve it, we should have the scope.
Scope.
And what, what exactly the, the goals of it are, kind of when we know that the completion, expected completion, like for example with the website, the completion would be presumably when the website's up and, up and running, because I know that's been a lot of...
Soon.
Soon. But to give, and like when we did the bridge.
Yeah.
To have the real, the actual goals of it and the actual what kind of the scope of it is.
And suggested membership, I think.
And suggested membership.
I just say this because I learned a lot in the website subcommittee creation.
Yes.
So.
It's a great exercise.
I think come to you and ask you tips. That's what I do.
Great exercise in open meeting law.
Great exercise, yes.
So, in, in the number of people, where we want to draw people from, so that, that can kind of be figured out offline and if it's ready to be put in the pack, because I'm realizing we need the packet to go out probably in the next day or so. So, we could also put it off to the 16th.
Yes.
I don't want to rush because I think it's an important thing. I think we want to think about it carefully.
Yeah, I just wanted to introduce the notion.
Yeah, that's great.
We'll talk further about the details.
Yeah.
And Mina and I had a discussion about, so she and Jim Cousins have really built an empire with that community communications group.
Yeah.
We, I mean, she now has quite a few attendees and they come from sort of all different walks of Hopkinton. And I had said to her that would be a very good group to tap into as well.
Yes.
Yes.
Because you'll really reach to, you know, people who are coming from a variety of places, you know, anything from neighborhoods to the garden club to HCM and, you know, the library.
Yeah.
People come from a senior center everywhere.
Great.
It's a good group.
That's great.
Thank you.
I, you know, my standard website's chugging along.
More than chugging along, you guys have done a tremendous amount of work.
Not me, it's Ashok and his team, lots, lots, lots of time, lots of quick turnarounds with the vendor and a lot of hours. And the team has been incredibly responsive and turning around comments to the designers and so forth over the weekends and over vacation and they've gone kind of above and beyond. We were hoping to have the quote-unquote "final design" approved today. We, as a subcommittee, met this morning and we all agree that we're not there yet. We didn't, we're close, we're balancing, as I think I mentioned to somebody, we're balancing functionality with priorities on access to calendaring and events, which were the community's top priorities. Easy, easy at a glance knowing what's going on, where my child needs to be, et cetera, with visual interest. And that's, so we're just making sure that we have a cohesive visual design, but it's also very functional. And that's what we're tweaking. So, hopefully, in the very near future, we'll have the homepage and the style guide finalized and we'll bring it to share and then they'll work on the school-level pages and tweaking the mobile, the mobile design to make sure that things are stacking and wrapping and so forth on a phone and on a tablet and whatnot the way we need them to. So, chugging along.
Fantastic.
And I should say on the side, they're also doing a lot of work on content. Relevant to us is the policy content, which they have converted most of our policies to HTML, which will help with translation and searchability. So, they've already done that, they've got a staging area for new content for the new website and they've been working very hard on that. So, I think it's going to look really nice. It should make our policy manual much more accessible to everybody, us included.
Great. I like us included too.
Us included, yeah.
It can be difficult to find just the right policy if you don't understand particularly the way the letters go and whatnot.
Right, exactly.
Great, thank you. I have a couple. Mina and I, and I just am feeling the missing of Mina today, but she and I did meet and had a really good conversation on the processes now so that we will be able to bring something forward to show and kind of to map out our work kind of, it's, we're not doing a one-off, we're looking to kind of keep this work going. So, that's, that was that. Next week, I am going to bring forward a report on the turf field funding. If you recall back, when we met with appropriations, there was an ask on that and some ideas and to update where we are and kind of ideas on where we're going forward with that. So, that's, I will have that. The bridge is gaining some steam and really excited about the enthusiasm that the people individually bring to the committee. And it's really, it's eye-opening to me when the needs that are being identified within the district. So, in looking to try to meet things like, you know, making sure that they're able to, students are able to come prepared that have materials, binders, things like that, that they are not always able to purchase for themselves. So, really concrete things like that, but also things like we're looking at putting out a survey, I know I hate, survey feels like a dirty word here, but to survey what some of the needs are that students are having that they're not able to, and what the barriers are for them to access needs. For example, field trips are a big deal in multiple buildings where kids are having difficulty or where they're not bringing in money for field trips and the school's not always sure because they're not always reaching out to say they have a financial need and what the barriers are of why people don't reach out when they have a need. So, that's trying to get some of that information. So, doing that and kind of moving forward with that. So, and then...
That's great.
Yeah, so that, those were my only actual subcommittee things, but I am really excited for the bridge to, in particularly as we're closing out this year, what we can learn to inform the opening of school in September when there are, you know, all fresh faces.
I'm curious, so the bridge, I know in some communities that have families that struggle with some of the financial demands that we all face, they, they get concerned about nutrition in the summer. Has that been brought up in the bridge committee at all? Because when students don't have access to, to food at school, do we have any concerns in our community that we know of?
So, I am not familiar with those statistics. I think probably Colleen Souza and the youth, the youth commission would have more statistics on that just because they're really dealing more hands-on with what the needs are in the community on a larger basis.
Okay.
So, that's, that's where we are with, with that. And I will have more, that will be more coming as, because we are going to start to have more fruits of our labor, I guess would be the thing there. So, that moves us into new business. So, I have item A, which is the Boston Athletic Association donation.
Okay, so the Boston Athletic Association has donated $25,000 to the Hopkins Public Schools gift account and I am just looking for a motion to accept that donation.
I move to accept it.
Motion by Meg?
Second.
Second by Amanda, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved and with thanks to the Boston Athletic Association.
Yes, and I spoke to Mr. Kilduff today and he will be coming to a subsequent meeting because he has more money for us.
Oh, oh.
And he'll be bringing his VAA friends with him.
I love when he comes to our meetings.
Yes, I know. And I know we always say he brings swag.
He brings swag, yes.
That's right.
Got a nice sense.
A request from Mr. Keller that on behalf of the middle school that we accept 15 ThinkPad laptops with an estimated value of $1,500. And those were given to us from David Bedoni, who's the vice president of informational technology Pega Systems. So, just looking for a motion for that.
I move that we accept the ThinkPad laptops.
Motion by Meg, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Amanda, all those in favor?
Yes.
Aye. So, a special thank you to them for that as well.
Yes, that's fantastic.
I like how you bring all these positive things and pick us up in the meeting in the middle. Keeps us going.
When I read this agenda, I was like, this is going to be great, this little section right here. This is going to be really fantastic, yeah.
Chick-chick.
Yeah, it's just great, they're so generous.
And we have three $100 donations and I am looking for a motion to accept those donations from Gerard Lazaro, Hopkinton Spoon Inc., and from Gerard Lazaro, Hopkinton Spoon Inc. and Bill's Pizza. So, three $100 donations and totally $300 to be given to the Hopkinton Middle School Robotics Club.
I move to accept those donations.
Motion by Meg?
Second.
Second by Amanda, all those in favor?
Yes.
Aye. So, that's so moved.
We're very lucky to have such a generous community. We really are, we have a lot of support from the businesses at town.
And the last one is a $100 donation from Janet Harris for the Middle School Desire to Inspire program.
I move to accept that donation too.
Motion by Meg?
Second.
Second by Amanda, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that also passes.
Thank you, everybody.
So, that brings us then into the Upper Charles Trail presentation. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you for having me.
Jane, I can just advance those slides as you tell me to.
Sure.
Because they're already loaded.
All right, let me get my laptop up here. Get my glasses. So, my name is Jane Moran and I'm the chairman of the Upper Charles Trail Committee. And we have, and I'm very grateful for you guys seeing me tonight. I think that this is such an integral part of our vision that, and we have been working on this for quite a while and I'll mention it in my presentation, but this is just another step in the process. So, it, we feel that it's necessary for, it will be obvious why we need to bring you up to speed. So, some of you may or may not be aware of the Milford-Churchill Trail. So, this, our committee has been charged by the Hopkinton Board of Selectmen probably about six years ago now to plan, construct, build, and engineer a similar trail. It's called the Ashland Trail that would provide connectivity from the Milford town line to the Ashland town line. So, the trail would start at the Milford Trail, it would cross Hayden Row several times and arrive at the Marathon School. And I'll explain more about that later. It has been suggested by engineers to connect from the Marathon School through the EMC Park, through the school complex to the Center Trail, proceeding to the Main Street corridor, to the downtown common, where it would continue east through town-owned property, crossing Route 135 in the vicinity of the Legacy Farms area. Would continue north, ultimately ending up in the Hopkinton State Park in the town of Ashland, actually. So, over the past five years, we've hired various engineering firms to connect pre-feasibility studies to show us where the trail could be built. They have presented multiple options and each of the options provides their own set of challenges. At this point, the point of the focus of the Upper Charles Trail is to provide connectivity from the Marathon School to the Center Trail. So, that's why I'm here tonight. We feel, the Upper Charles Trail feels very strongly that even if we can't build this complete seven-mile trail from Milford to Ashland, we feel that this particular connectivity is really important and vitally integral and, you know, it's a huge thing, a huge opportunity for the town of Hopkinton to take advantage of. So, recently, we are, we were informed of an opportunity that we could apply for a Mass Trails grant that would pay for the full engineering studies. That's just a Mass Trails grant. The committee could then use the, what we would gain, you know, the feasibility studies and the engineering studies, and then we could actually apply for a Mass Tips grant. The Mass Tips grant would pay for the actual construction of this connective trail from Hayden Row through the school complex to the Center Trail. And we estimate that cost value to be 1.6 million. So, there's a lot of money here on the table. So, our two need for connectivity is that the first step is the Mass Trails grant. So, this, if we were fortunate enough to get this Mass Trails grant, we estimate that the value of that would be between 40 and 60K just to provide the engineering studies and the design and the engineering and all, the scope of work and all of that. We would then take that information and use it because that's part of the necessary requirements to apply for a Mass Tips grant. You have to pay for that, the town would have to pay for that. So, we're looking for this kind of freebie here if we could go for the Mass Tips grant. And as I mentioned before, the estimate, approximate value of actually building this trail would be about 1.6. We've already received that information from our engineering firms. So, in order to apply for either grant, we need the permission from the school committee to go forward because all of the property owners have to sign off on this and we're involved with probably 10 or 11 different property owners and various stakeholders, town, various committees and boards that we need to, you know, sell this project to in order to go forward, in order to apply for the Mass Tips grant. So, this is another step in our process. So, I'm here tonight to seek a permission and a favorable vote, hopefully, from the school committee to divert through the school commit, school property to the ultimate purpose of building this trail. So, what does this trail look like? So, that would be the next slide. Okay, so I'm not sure, I might get up there and show you. So, the trail would come through, this is EMC Park here, and this would be the project limit. It would come downtown-owned property... limit. It would come downtown on property, which is just south of, yes, south of McDermott Town, enter this town-owned property here. And you see these little Chris houses here? That's the abandoned railroad bed. So we would use this territory to reclaim and repurpose the abandoned railroad bed. And the end of the scope of the project is connecting to the existing Center Trail, which is here. So for the purposes of identification, this is the high school complex here. This is the elementary school here. We would come here, we would have to cross the loop road two times. So this is about 2,000 feet north of the elementary school. Then we would enter the wooded road, wooded land again, where we would need to cross the Center Trail again, I mean, the loop road again, to connect to the Center Trail. There is a second slide that I provided, which shows the engineering legends, which shows wetlands and things like that, but does not show the high school complex. So before I open it up to questions, I would just like to give you a little bit of a background. Many years ago, when the Marathon School was in the planning stage, and there was negotiations and whatever you want to call it, between the planning board and the school committee, with the school committee planning, whatever they were called. And we, the Upper Charles Trail was there just about every meeting, because we had a vision that we wanted to circumvent the borders of the Irvine-Todaro property, so that we could connect to EMC Park to ultimately get to this point where we could enter the school complex and connect to the Center Trail. The challenge that the Upper Charles Trail has is that in the Board of Selectmen, when they charged us with our purpose, we have to include the Center Trail in our project, because that's part of the original abandoned railroad bed. So how do we get from the Milford Bike Trail to the Center Trail? And I have to tell you that this was, this was, this plan is our first choice, but there is another choice. And the other choice was to enter privately-owned properties in back of the Charlesview area, but there were over five different property owners that we would have to come to agreements with. And I have to tell you, right off, first off the bat, we ran into a huge donoie. And we would have to, it's not that it couldn't happen, but may not happen for a long, long time. There was, there's already been a solar farm built there. There's already been another development that was not agreeable to us. We have been working really diligently to get there. A couple of property owners just hung up on us and said, "Don't come near me. We don't want to talk to you." So we have had our challenges, but that's okay. Because, to be truthful with you, we always felt that this was our desired effect, but this plan has to be approved ultimately by the Board of Selectmen. And the Board of Selectmen have made it clear to us that we have to exhaust any and all avenues. So we really needed to pursue all of those avenues. So this is where we are today. If this doesn't work out, we'll go back to another plan. But anyway, at the end of the day, with the Irvine-Todaro property and the Marathon School, we did get permission. So we already have that existing easement around that Irvine-Todaro property that will connect to the EMC property. The second thing that I would like to mention is that we have worked diligently, not only with this particular aspect, but other multiple partners throughout the area. And this is, this is where we are now. And this is just one more step in the process to gaining our ultimate goal, which is a ways down the road. And I just want to remind you, we're still in the planning process. So we're at the 20,000-foot level, so I can share with you some of the facts that can go forward in the next step, but I may not be able to answer everything, but I will do the best I can. So I open it up to questions.
So what is your hoped-for timeline, kind of with the next steps moving forward?
Well, actually, it's interesting that you should mention that, because we are ready with our engineering firm to go forward at any point in time, because we just had our proposal that approved by the town to spend our budgeted money. We had money budgeted for this. But we had to get the engineering firm to propose it. And this language would provide the engineering firm the opportunity to enter the school property and do wetlands observations, soil testing, and things like that. We're ready to do that anytime if we get the permission to go forward.
You got other questions?
I have a couple. I mean, I love the trail. I just want to make sure that, you know, I just have a couple of questions.
Sure.
I guess, let me skip the first one and go to the second one. The cross-country trail that was built recently, this, a year ago? Was it two years ago? A year ago?
Last year was the first year.
There's been a couple.
Will it have any, will the construction of this have any impact whatsoever on the cross-country trail?
No, it's not anywhere near it.
Doesn't the cross-country trail intersect with Center School?
It goes down Center Trail.
I mean, Center Trail.
It does not go near the abandoned rail bed.
It goes down the Center Trail, though.
Oh, but that's already been approved. That's mandated by the Board of Selectmen. That will be the Upper Charles Trail.
It doesn't need to be altered.
But it does not have to, it will not interfere with...
But I mean, the construction piece. I know what's already there is there, but the construction piece won't affect the cross-country.
What we've heard from the state is that we have already several patches that have been mandated. For example, the Center Trail. We will get credit for that, but they will not interfere with us in coming in and mandating asphalt or anything else. They will just give us credits for a partial, a partial piece of the trail already being built.
Okay, as dirt, and it can stay dirt, or does it have to be paved?
Well, when we go forward and propose our ultimate plan, we will get the most points and the most money from the state if we have it paved. But we do not get discredit for, that's such a word, we won't get penalized for having existing partial stone dust trails existing, as long as they comply with handicapped accessibility and things like that. It could be that we need to apply for improvements, and they would...
So that was sort of, that was, that ties into the first question I had on my list. So the existing trails that are already in the place where the new trail is going to be constructed. So I understand Center Trail, and, you know, I'm familiar with that, but where you want to build the new section? Are there any trails already there, kind of, that are just not necessarily official?
We would classify them as Class 1 or Class 2 trails. You could go in there, and you could walk, maybe single person, one person behind the other, and maybe walk your dog, but you're going to trip over roots, things like that. We would need to, in order to get our state grant, have the engineering studies done to upgrade it to a Class 5 trail, which is similar to the Milford Trail.
Okay. And then in terms of maintenance of the trail, if it's on school grounds, how will that be handled?
That's an interesting question, and I think that would probably have to be mitigated as we go down the road. However, it's my understanding now that if it's been built and regulated and sponsored by the Upper Charles Trail, either the Upper Charles Trail Friends Association would be responsible for it, or the town.
Okay. And along with that, too, especially on school grounds, I guess security on the trails would be another thing that kind of goes hand in hand with maintenance.
And so we're still at the 20,000, 5,000, whatever.
Of course, right.
So that, as if we are fortunate enough to get these grants, and then these engineering studies come in, and a contract is awarded, those subjects would be brought up in public meetings, which are required through these grant processes. And I'm sure those conversations would happen, and people could converse with it. But I can tell you, if you look at the Milford Trail now and other, there are other similar types of trails. There's Born Trail, there's, you know, multiple trails throughout the state that have done this. And there are mitigation factors all along. It just depends on the individual needs and the necessities.
Right. Which, my last question might not be appropriate for the 20,000-foot view either, but the other, the last piece, I mean, all of these, I'm just keep, in the back of my mind, I'm thinking, the kids are going to use this. And so, you know, in terms of security, I want to make sure that the, you know, for the kids, and the maintenance, the schools, you know, we got a tight situation right now. Anyway, we can't add that to our budget. But then the last piece to me is, is sort of the construction piece. How would we ensure that the construction does not affect the kids? You know, I mean, the timeline of the construction would have to be, the school's 10 months out of the year. Is that little two-month window in the summertime going to be sufficient in order to complete the construction so it doesn't affect...
I can't answer that right now.
Right.
But I would suggest that, on the little bit I know about grants and awarding of contracts, that that would be up to the various partners to have those regulations written into the agreement with the construction companies, so that everybody is comfortable. And as far as providing opportunities for kids, you're right, that we're, it is our hope, and that's why we envisioned this, that we could draw the community together, and we could pull neighborhoods together. But not only that, I think that you guys are in an infinite position to provide multiple areas of opportunities for all diversities. I had visited one trail where there was actually a segment for a braille system, for blind kids to use it. And where it's going to be asphalted, you're close enough to the handicap areas, you know, you can have kids with wheelchairs and accessibilities use it. And just getting from one school site to the other, or having different activities, you know, you have all your programs in the evenings, and in the summer, and having an opportunity for neighborhoods to enjoy the trail and walk to the site rather than driving to the site. So I think, you know, we're going to have concerns all along the way. And I think that, from what I've discovered, talking with all of the partners, I would say 80% of them are really, really excited about finding a way to work this out. Right now, I'm in serious negotiations with Legacy Farms, Pulte, Heritage Farms, and Tennessee Gas. And we want to make this happen.
It's exciting.
It's very exciting. So we're going through multiple, you know, mitigations and, you know, counter-proposals and things like that. But I think all of us are determined to try and make this happen.
I really admire your perseverance and the perseverance of the Upper Charles Trail Committee, because I know...
Thank you.
You have encountered unbelievable obstacles, when this trail, to me, seems an environmental imperative. Why we don't focus more on creating trails the kids can bike or walk to school, when we have such traffic problems, we have pollution problems. Why aren't we thinking like this more has always astonished me. So I think it's a fabulous idea. I also think making the trails more accessible to people in wheelchairs or with different disabilities, and that includes paving Central Trail, is absolutely important.
And that will be a conversation for the public to discuss later on.
Exactly, but it's making it accessible to everyone.
Yeah.
And I think, great, good job. Good for you for staying the course. I know it's not easy, really.
Well, we're also trying to make it available for equestrian use and all sorts, you know, other, a variety of opportunities for all kinds of people throughout town.
Better than ours.
Especially in our Legacy Farms North, we were able to get in the discussion early enough, so that we were able to offer them an opportunity to provide a separate side-by-side trail for equestrian use. It is not appropriate for the whole trail, but that would get people from a certain point in the east part of Hopkinton over to Hopkinton State Park, which is one of the few parks that allows equestrian use. So, I mean, it's multiple, multiple opportunities that we've just started to scratch the surface on. I think this is just the beginning. Yes. Okay, thank you.
Can I just ask, I'm not great at reading a map, and I can't see very well, so there's two bad things.
I can certainly email this to you folks.
Okay, the cut-through of Old Railbed, that's the dotted red line, is that currently the path that the kids use to get to K Lot?
Parts of it. I can't tell you that all of it is, that they use, but they do use parts of it.
Okay, it looks like...
They use to get where?
To K Lot, to J Lot and K Lot. Hopkins is the one that's, you said elementary school, you meant, that's Hopkins there, right?
Hopkins is, okay, so this is the elementary, yes.
That's Hopkins, yeah. So I'm pretty sure that that horizontal red dotted line...
Yeah.
No, 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 no. Yep, there we go. From that circle across the wetland?
Yes.
To the left?
I think this is where they're cutting through here to get to this area. Now, there's also opportunities, I have to tell you, to improve the cut-throughs. There's multiple smaller trails here, and that would be up to the school committee if they wanted to take advantage of that. And I can also tell you that this ultimate picture, if it does get through, we have an opportunity in the very beginning to do spur connections. So that's something we could talk about later, so that if we find that these kids are cutting through, and I think they are cutting through, from the height of it to get to different parts, and I'm not...
I think what they do actually, it's what I'm trying to figure, I think they do walk to where that red circle is, and I think they cut, they go left.
Yeah.
And they cut through, because I think K Lot, if I'm reading the map right, is that right, to the far left?
Yeah.
Right.
This is the existing Center Trail. Oh, so it's even, it's way over there.
Yeah. K Lot, it's a walk.
Back in the curtain there somewhere.
Yeah, so it's kind of irrelevant, but if we get on board early, there's an option for us to include some spur trails. And I also have a wonderful volunteer in town, Peter Legoy, who really relishes in designing smaller-type spur trails. He's not really interested in what we're doing with the Class 5 paved, but he's more interested in the running trials, trailing trails, connectivity trails. So we have unlimited resources in this town. We're very, very fortunate.
Just to finish, so I just, what I'm curious about is, I love the Milford Trail, I love the trails. So I'm hoping somehow we can figure this out. But with the connection to Marathon and going through the schools, we'll have a lot of students walking on these trails at certain times of day, because they do use that to access their parking lots.
Yes.
So the student drivers are going through there. The elementary schools of young families may be walking. I know, like, on the Cape, when, you know, there are a lot of rail trails on the Cape, and sometimes, you know, the cyclists are training, and the walkers are, you know, kind of, they're meandering. And sometimes, a training cyclist and a meandering young child can be very dangerous. So will there, is there anticipation of sort of road, like, a divided area, or a separate part for bikes, or particularly on-school property, an area for pedestrians, or that's sort of safe?
So this trail would be 12 feet wide, divided with painted lines.
Okay.
And, you know, various, multiple safety features throughout the whole planned course. I do know that if these cyclists in a planned event have to get permission from the Hopkinton Police Department to get a permit to go through their town. And I would imagine that that would include the school property as well, because this would be town property. So that is something that would need to be addressed further on down the road, so that we can plan events and maybe let people know it's not a good time to go out on the trail if they're there, or warn cyclists. Because I know that that is a problem down in the Cape area, when they have braces, and the residents haven't been warned that this is not a good day to be out there.
Yeah, okay.
So it's, it's a matter of information and education and planning.
And how long is the stretch from Marathon to Center Trail?
It's about a half a mile.
So, question over here. Has Mr. Person had an opportunity to consider...
No, so I think that's why we put it on the agenda tonight, for just to report. I thought it might be prudent for each of you to walk it, and for us to run this by Tim and his department.
So Tim and I actually met, oh, over a year ago.
Yeah.
So we've been through this.
Okay.
And I believe Peter Legoy was with us at the time, and possibly even Tim, Mike Bolson. So we've seen this.
Okay. So if that's the case, I would like to schedule an opportunity for us to do a site walk, and then, because we can't really vote on it, because it's not up for vote anyway on our agenda.
Yeah.
agenda. And then schedule a vote on this for an upcoming meeting. So does that make sense?
And I'd love to see the map closer up.
Yes.
But would people be interested in taking a site walk?
I'd love a site walk.
I do it every day. So I'm happy to do it with you.
Fabulous.
And can I ask, Jean, I mean, I, I mean, same thing. I would love to make this happen. It's just from the, you know, the school standpoint that I feel like there's some potential sticky things. You know, if it weren't school land, if it were town land, it'd be, I'd be like, awesome. If, if we, if we go forward with this and then some of these concerns that we've brought up are, you know, we, we hit some sort of roadblock, what happens then?
So part of the approval process of this, approving the, this first step, the Mass Trails Grant, is that within the grant, there has to be two or three different, I think it's two, public meetings that we are responsible for having. I think those questions would come up then about the public. I can tell you, so I don't know what the sticky points might be, but you would definitely hear about them then.
Right.
Okay, so we possibly hear about these sticky points and maybe you want to go forward with it, or maybe you don't. At this point, we've invested, I think, about less than $10,000 to hire our engineering firm to go forward with the preliminary. So when I said they're ready to go, they could be go, they could go out on your property tomorrow to do this very minor site work and get this going so that they can continue to do their work. If, if, the, the next step for them would be to help us with the public hearings and to help us come before the planning board, and the most important part is Conservation Commission because there is a lot of wetlands in there. So the, what our committee has instructed them to do is make us ready, Conservation Commission ready. If we can't do this, we want to know now. We don't want to waste anybody's time.
Sure.
But there should be a way, I mean, they build bridges over oceans for crying out loud and rivers.
Yep.
So we just don't know what that's going to entail. That cost would be reflected in the secondary grant, which would be the Mass tip. So if we have to build a bridge, or if we have to build a boardwalk, that cost would then be reflected. But we don't know that until they do that.
But to address your point, our approval could be contingent on some of the, if there were concerns that we had done.
Correct. So if we lose it in the end of the game, the town has lost $10,000 if, if the school committee doesn't agree to the final. Because this is all contingent upon further public hearings, and don't forget, the Board of Selectmen has to find, sign off on the entire project at the end of the day. So you guys are first-
We feel special.
...what if Selectmen have to sign off on it at the end of the day?
So, sorry, just, at the two points where you're crossing the Loop Road?
Yes.
Would there be like a push-button signal that would stop traffic?
Oh, I'm sure.
Or not? I mean, just because, as you probably well-
I would imagine.
Twice, actually four times a day because we're two different school schedules right now. It's a bus route, it's a driving route.
So what they do is they go out there with traffic survey, and they do the traffic surveys, and they figure out what the times are, that there's the most traffic, and what the most, what times generate the most time a day. And then from there, the engineering companies figure out the best traffic signals that are available and would be recommended. And again, that information would come before you, and you want to upgrade, or you want to downgrade, or you want to keep it as is. I mean, these are just all things that they're recommending as professionals. And you would have heard your constituents, you would have heard from the public meetings, you would have heard from, you know, maybe we need extra signage, you know, whatever the, the interest may be. There would be times to address those. This is just, as I mentioned, a very preliminary first step in the process to get us where we hope to be at the end of the day. But this is by no ways the end of the story. There's lots of conversation that needs to continue.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you for being open.
Absolutely.
I think we're, it's really, we feel strongly that this is really important for our total community. And I think our school kids are one of the biggest.
I appreciate you're looking at the whole town, and I hear a lot of kind of, it seems like growing conversations around town about One Hopkinton and cross-collaboration between groups. And it really, it, it feels good to all-
Yeah.
-come together on different issues like this.
Well, that's how we're going to be successful.
When you share this, do you have a picture? I know this is a phase of the whole thing. I love the idea of the connection to Milford. Do you have a picture that etches out where you go in the next phase, like how we're going to get to Milford?
It's, at this point, it's, it's not big because we feel like we can't really reveal private own, property owners that we're negotiating with. But we do have a very, we do have a nice concept, and I'd be happy to forward that to Georgette or Dr. Kavanaugh tomorrow. And I did, I did forward this-
Georgette has this, correct?
Yes.
So she has this.
Yes. So she could forward it to the committee, and then I could forward you further documents as you proceed. And then we also have a website where all of our engineering studies are posted online.
Oh, great.
Yep. So you could just check Upper Charles Trail Committee, hopkintomass.com. And it's also available on the Tom White, Tom White website. So that you just, all of the visibility studies that we're relying on our information from that are posted.
That's awesome.
Great.
Thank you, Jean.
It's great. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Thank you for all of your due diligence and working with all the kids in town, especially my three grandchildren.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Well, hopefully, you'll let me know when you want me to come back.
Yes.
Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Have a good night, Jean.
Thank you.
See you soon.
Do you have any idea when that might be? The engineering first, for, engineering firm is anxious to know whether they can book another job or not, or if they would be allowed permission to go on the property to do some preliminary work.
Will be on the sixth or the 16th, the second?
We have the second and the 16th, we have two meetings. So we could try to put, get that on sooner rather than later. We could hopefully try to get a site walk scheduled in the next, between now and the next meeting if that, unless it's raining every day between now and-
I know, yeah. I mean, it's right there, right.
But to try to maybe bring it back on the 16th, does that, does that work?
Oh, absolutely. I'm available whenever you are. Super.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You too.
Thank you.
So that brings us into the next item, which is the MOU with the Legacy Farms discussion. And as you will recall from, now I'm trying to think of the date when we met, but when we, we met and discussed some of these things. We had talked about entering into an MOU with the Board of Selectmen regarding the mitigation money with Legacy Farms. And I am happy to report, I did, had a very nice conversation with the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, Claire Wright, about this. It seems that her sense was that the Board of Selectmen would be very happy to enter into an MOU. And I know there are a couple of things that we have to consider in going forward, one of which is ultimately the mitigation money will be under the jurisdiction of town meeting and not our MOU. Which is that it, town meeting can vote, how town meeting can vote. But the sense that we had in discussing it is that an MOU would still be a desirable thing to enter into because it will provide guidance for future iterations of both boards on what the intent was of the stabilization fund, and also for the voters so that when different items come forward, there is something to reflect back on and to say, this is what, when the stabilization account was created, this is what the intent was, these are the things that should be considered. So I think it's a valid thing. Her, one thing that she, her, and I, point that she had, she, her feeling was that it should happen after the election since there may be some turnover, maybe not turnover on different boards, and that we should figure it out then because it would also, we wouldn't have it done in time for town meeting anyway. That's sort of the, and the couple of things that I think we want to keep in mind when we actually sit down to draft the MOU would be obviously the intended purposes that we see, and we did list some of those out in a previous meeting in terms of mitigation and making sure that we can keep that focus going forward. And I think also we want to make sure that we call out specifically that the things that the mitigation money is covering are things that are outside of our operating budget, that it's not meant to be a substitute for our operating budget, that our operating budget is our operating budget and our operating costs, obviously. But the mitigation money is meant for mitigation and that we should be able to kind of do both.
Yes.
That's the update. And I don't have, obviously, if we're going to wait until after the election. If anybody had any questions related to that, or comments, or thoughts on going forward.
I always think we need to provide the translation of MOU.
Yeah, that's actually, thank you. That's the next, memorandum of understanding.
Thank you very much.
You know what? I think part of what happens to me is that we use them so much amongst ourselves and kind of in different ways that it, it kind of takes the place of the actual full name. So the reminder's appreciated.
So just to clarify, when you say the, the funds would be outside of the operating budget, it means that the operating budget will cover operations-
Correct.
-for the year? And then if a growth-triggered need arises during the year that's not, was not built into the scope of the operating budget, that's when we would apply potentially this money to address that need?
Correct. And that, that's, it, it wouldn't, for example, be kind of as we're building our budget to say we've requested, I don't know, X amount of money for, I, I don't know, with something that we have, like textbooks, for example. We need money that, it's not going to say, oh, well, we're, we're trying to cut costs out of the operating budget, just take that for the mitigation money. Right. That, that's not a true mitigation.
Great. Thank you. That's good to clarify.
So that's-
And thank you and Dr. Kavanaugh for your perseverance these last few months.
I, I think we are in a good place going into town meeting. As, as good as it gets. That is that, and that moves us into the superintendent evaluation process, which is, I just, I'm going to say this for the benefit of our audience, one of our three most important tasks that we do on our time on the school committee, obviously, policy and budget being the other two. I included in the packet, it, and I don't know, Amanda, if you were at this breakout from the MASC conference or not?
I was.
Okay. It, it kind of has become a blur because the fall seems like a long time ago. But because I thought it was a helpful thing to look at for us, it, I liked how simplistic, how simple it is to look at the, the process itself. Because I know when we did the formative evaluation, it felt like kind of a big ask in terms of we hadn't done this before and trying to make our way, figure out the process, whereas this seems like the process is spelled out better. I think you had also-
I did. So I had Georgette create these folders.
So fancy.
One of them is for me, so I'll hang on to that one. Excellent. And the presentation that Nancy was just describing is on the left, but on the right-hand side, what you will find is what the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has put out as sort of the official form for superintendent evaluation. Now, the department doesn't say that you have to use this form, but I think that it's a form that sort of spells out the process very nicely, so it may be helpful for us to take a look at as a group. What you see at the top is an assessment of the progress toward the superintendent's goals. So any of those goals that are professional practice, student learning, or district improvement. And the five categories there are, did not meet, made some progress, made significant progress, met the goal, or exceeded the goal. And so you would take the five goals that were up on the screen tonight, and you would evaluate them, looking at, you know, all five of those categories. And then step two is to assess the superintendent on the performance standards. And when we say performance standards, what we mean really by that is, we always call it the evaluation rubric. And the four standards globally are instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. And then what would happen is there would be an overall summative performance rating. So based on the goals, based on the rubric, is the superintendent unsatisfied, he needs improvement, proficient, or exemplary? And then there's a rating impact on student learning. Would you say that the impact on student learning is low, moderate, or high? And then there's an opportunity for any evaluator comment. After you get past page two, you can put in the, it's sort of the worksheet area, so you can put in the professional practice goal, the student learning goal, and any district improvement goals, any additional goals. So say there were two student learning goals, for example, that would fall into category six and seven, or boxes six and seven. And that's sort of your little worksheet area right there. That first page is that, you know, just real summative part, and then you get into more of the nitty-gritty. And then you get into what we would call the rubric. And I believe that, so if you look at 1A curriculum and 1B instruction, those are the sort of very global headlines that go with those. So there's 1A1, 1A2, and there are descriptors that go with each one of those. And we call those elements. So what you're seeing there are the standards and the indicators only. And again, you would evaluate unsatisfied, he needs improvement, proficient, or exemplary, and there are places there for commentary. And you can see that you do that with standard one, standard two, standard three, and standard four. And so that gets you to page seven. Now, I guess what some districts will do is they'll ask superintendents only to be evaluated on, you know, one of those areas under each standard, two under each standard. Sometimes they'll be heavy in standard one and standard two, less heavy in standard three and standard four, however that plays out. But because for this year, now we took on this whole package, I would, I think that it's sort of fair that we stay in that vein and we take a look at my evaluation through that whole package. So what I'm going to ask you to do between now and our next, well, actually now and next Tuesday, because we'll need some time between Tuesday and Thursday, is to just sort of take a look at all of this documentation. And I know that in some sense, you may sort of have this gut feeling about the way things are going in a, in a particular place. So if I can just maybe throw out an example. So, for example, on, you know, page four of seven, if you looked at 1E that says data-informed decision-making, the superintendent uses multiple sources of evidence related to student learning, including state, district, school assessment results, and growth data to inform school and district goals, and improve organizational performance, educator effectiveness, and student learning. You may have sort of a gut feeling that that's going well, that's going not well. But if you have questions about any of these that you would like to talk to me about, have evidence put on the table for, I'm happy to do that. And I think I would prefer to, you know, put that evidence out there sort of upfront, and then we can have conversations about what we see next Thursday when we meet, before we move into that sort of final summit of evaluation, if that's good for all of you.
Great. What is the milestone for next Thursday?
So, questions that we have?
Yes.
And things that we want clarification on in looking at this, things that you would like her to bring more evidence forward. Because some of this stuff is a little bit more behind the scenes than what we see. Some of it we see, obviously, day in and day out. But to, so to bring things forward, we want more clarity on. We're not, you don't have to do the evaluation between now and then.
Okay.
And then after next Thursday, we will each do an individual evaluation. And then one person, it's typically the Chair, will collate them and make one document so that looking at the, it's a more matter of kind of looking at everybody's and saying, okay, everybody thought she was proficient. Everybody thought kind of like that. Or kind of looking at what the difference is, and I think typically you would kind of average where they are so that you, so that it's one document. The final document is a public document. I believe the, I do not believe that our individual ones are public documents. Is that your understanding? So we will have to clarify that, obviously, as well. But that's, that's, that's not, we don't have to do that until after next week.
Okay.
Is that, and then typically, MASC recommends doing it before an election so that the board does not turn over. It's unlikely, given that I'm unopposed, that I, if I am voted off, if I am voted off unopposed, I was not intended to be here. unopposed, I was not intended to be here. It would say volumes about how the town feels about.
Sounds like a plan. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Just, because I never seem to get this right, so I'll just start asking questions. So there's a comment, and I remember this came up at the session we sat in on, that for new superintendents, performances on track, like for the needs improvement developing, it seemed at that thing that we sat in, that it's very common for new superintendents, because we have one, to maybe have areas that, I mean, just, it's a new superintendent, hasn't had an opportunity to master.
True.
So that doesn't necessarily mean a bad thing, right? It could, I mean, I don't know, like, I'm not sure what happens with this. How does this then relate to, I don't know, performance, I don't know, what, how does this used to-
So, I mean, it's public documents, so in the, hopefully, not circumstance in which Dr. Kavanaugh was looking for another job, for example, which we hope is not the case, a potential future employer could, I'm sure, access this in some way and say, what was the, it also, I would hope the primary purpose of it would be to inform kind of, Dr. Kavanaugh is looking towards next year, and kind of reflecting on that, and, would that be your understanding?
Yes, I think, you know, for some of these things, because, you know, you're in the very first year of sort of doing some of these things, there are some of the areas that, maybe, to give an example, would this would probably be?
I guess, sorry, I'm just, while you're looking, I ask that because I don't, in that we turn these over to one of us who then averages them and whatnot, I just want to make sure that whatever was intended to be the meaning of a rating is clear, because-
Yes.
If it's seen necessarily as, like, negative, if, you know, there is, I wouldn't, you know, if that's not how it's intended, I want it to be clear that it's positive, but a growth area.
Well, so my takeaway from looking at all of this stuff was that anything that had anything other than a proficient rating requires a comment.
Yes.
So that those comments, I think, really need to be part of what goes along with it, so that that would be-
Okay.
My hope. The other option that we do have is, and I did actually have some communication with Dorothy Presser, if we had the appetite or the desire to speak with her, I could see, you know, kind of where that's about.
Yes, maybe a good example, if we looked at standard four, if you look at standard four B, cultural proficiency, ensures that policies and practices enable staff members and students to interact effectively in a culturally diverse environment, which students' backgrounds, identities, strengths, and challenges are respected. I feel like in that one right there, we are really in the incipient stages of doing something, right? But then if we look at standard four C, demonstrates strong interpersonal written and verbal communication skills, I think that that's sort of one that would probably be unchanging. I mean, you either do, you don't have those, right? So I think that's kind of where you would, so for something like four B, you may want to say to me, can you sort of help me understand how things are going in the schools so that, you know, we do have those things at least started or developing, or where do you think you are in them? But I think with something like four C, you'd know the answer. You would either say yes or no.
Good.
I don't think it's-
You don't mind anything?
No.
I don't think it's dissimilar from the way that we evaluate teachers, because the standards are very similar in nature, and so when you're evaluating a first-year teacher, we have to decide if they're proficient or needs improvement, and if a first-year teacher receives a needs improvement, they're in jeopardy of not being re-employed. That's the way the system works. So what you might, as a school leader or evaluator, do in those situations is decide overall, has this person made proficient growth based on where they are in their career, based on the work that we've seen so far, and do we believe that their work so far is going to lead them to become what we believe maybe a veteran teacher would be in the area of proficiency? And sometimes as the evaluator, you acknowledge that in your comments, either through a conversation with the teacher or through some written comments that you provide in terms of areas, yes, I believe that this would be a proficient area overall, but these are the things we'd like to see moving forward.
That's helpful.
So, and you've had experience doing this as a school committee member as well, so that actually is helpful perspective for all of us.
We follow that same, or we have, we follow kind of that same philosophy.
That's really helpful, because it's not necessarily how, like, in other industries it would work, you know, and you might, in another industry, you might have needs improvement just, you know, you're, you know, it's on, you would never be at jeopardy of losing a job, you know? So it's good to have that insight.
It's a little different. Thank you.
So any questions or requests for evidence by Tuesday, please, so thank you.
That's great. Thank you very much. And that brings us into school committee policies on the website.
Oh, that's me. You know, I printed this off, and I left it at home, but I did send out to you, and this is not something that the working group on policy, which is Jen, Dr. Kavanaugh, and myself, think needs a vote, that this is all clerical stuff, but we want to just raise awareness of what we're doing. We started on a journey of trying to simplify the numbering scheme for our forms and procedures. We already have a taxonomy for policies, which is given to us by MAS C, but when there are related forms and procedures, they had suffixes like a dash one, dash E1, dash R1, didn't make any sense. Nobody knew why they were what they were, so we decided to just make those more understandable. So in doing that work, we went through the policies, the whole list of policies, looking for references to forms and procedures. And we also have, in our manual, some of the forms and procedures are just listed right like policies. And so it's kind of a mishmash, where you're trying to streamline it. It kind of mushroomed a little bit in that we found there were some references to forms we don't use any longer, there are some forms that appear in different versions in different parts of our website, to the community and so forth. So it's a big cleaning effort, but it's very timely, because as we clean everything, when we cut over to the new website, we'll cut over, hopefully, with clean policies. So all that said, you have been provided with a list of forms and procedures and policies that need some minor clerical changes. So on the list, you'll see a policy, usually it says, change the cross-reference to something dash E1 to something dash FRM for Form 1. And that's the kind of clerical change that sort of propagates throughout the whole manual. They're just tedious, it's just detailed tedious work of just checking cross-references and sources, and sending poor Dr. Kavanaugh off to chase down forms and things that we don't know if they exist. So it's purely clerical in nature. We do have a few things that cropped up that are more substantive, that are not on this list, that will come back through regular process if necessary. So if there's no objection to our making these clerical changes, we're going to just hand this list off to Georgette. She's going to be so happy. And then-
I broke the news to her.
And we had Mr. Golisch met with us as well, because he's overseeing the conversion to HTML, and he's kind of not that anxiously awaiting these changes to come through to him, too. So they're eager, though, to have us approve them, and okay, so they get started. So unless there's any concern about what you saw, we're just going to pass it forward.
Please do.
I am more than good with all that.
Yes.
And I really, I sincerely appreciate that, all the work that you guys have done.
It's fun.
Together. You say that, but I worked on the school committee last year.
That was last year. It's Amanda this year.
We really ratcheted up.
Nobody's going to want to take over, because it's gone up so high.
We're just going to get all clean, and the next year's working group will be something else.
Yeah, you guys could do really well again next year, I feel like.
You will, you will.
It's good, though, and I think, you know, for, most importantly, for the community, if you're looking for a form or a procedure, or, it shouldn't be hard, and we're hoping that it's a lot easier to find things, and when you find it, you have the right version. This, it's work that's worth doing, once every eight or nine years. So we don't really need a vote, and any questions or anything, but.
No questions.
No?
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So that brings us up to mitigation monies, I'm not skipping anything, am I? No, brings us up to the mitigation monies update. I don't have a huge update, since we all know, but I did want to just put it out there for our viewers at home, that the mitigation monies update is a reference to the mitigation money from the host community agreement with Legacy Farms. And there is a, an article on the town meeting warrant for the creation of stabilization account for that money, and there's also a motion within that for us to have $200,000 that we will have access to for mitigation-related expenses that we will undoubtedly, based on your presentation, incur more rapidly than not. I think actually the $200,000 is a very conservative number of what we're actually going to be needing. But we also want to make sure that we're able to preserve some money for years to come, because this impact is going to continue.
It might be worth it just for the viewers at home to just explain what they're going to be voting on, just give a heads up, because I think it is a little bit confusing if you haven't read.
So, yes, so I don't have the article in front of me to go through each thing, but there will be the one, one piece of it will be to the creation of the stabilization fund. Another piece will be for the $500,000 payment that has been, for the funding to go into the actual stabilization account. And I think also for viewers at home, what the stabilization account, part of how it works, is that it, for us to take money out of it, it will require a two-thirds vote of annual town meeting, or if there was a special town meeting, but two-thirds vote to withdraw any money from it. It only requires the 50% to get it up and, you know, funded. So there's that, is one piece, and then there is a piece for us to withdraw some money, to pull some money out of the stabilization fund this year. And then there, in subsequent years, we will continue to look at what our needs, we anticipate growth related to legacy farms is, in whole or in part, because obviously, one thing we had discussed is that it's not possible to just kind of separate out. If we had to hire a teacher, for example, we aren't putting all Legacy Farms kids in that classroom, so that it could be triggered by the fact that we've had growth from Legacy Farms, but that one teacher is not going to be teaching just kids from Legacy Farms, obviously. Or if we needed an oven, for example, at one of the schools, because we can't cook enough meals because of the increased growth related to that, we're not just serving kids that have come out of that development, so.
So just, and so the stabilization fund, just to make it clear for people, is, will hold the money from, if approved-
Yes.
-at town meeting, will hold the money from Legacy Farms, the initial payment and future payments-
Yes.
-and sit there and accrue interest and whatnot, and then at a town meeting, special or annual, as we need to access that money, we will request it from the voters.
Okay. That is correct.
Typically, the school committee would ask for that request, but the towns, the town accountant would have to be approved-
Yes.
-of the school committee's request before it gets to town meeting floor.
Correct. And the county accountant would look back to the charge of all of this to see that we are in fact meeting it, and we're not doing something outside of the scope of what the intent of the stabilization money is.
Yes, so there's sort of a lot of layers with school committee, town accountant, two-thirds vote of town meeting, so there is a lot of scrutiny, I think, over the money.
Yeah, but it can't be used for any other purposes than the schools.
So, that's a great question, actually.
I think people might want to know that answer, too.
So, yes, so the intent of it is to be used by the schools, but a stabilization account by law, the town could vote by a two-thirds vote to change the purpose of the stabilization fund down the road. That is-
Which is in slight contrast to the original intent of the host community agreement, but we're going to have to-
Correct.
-hope that our voters stick with us, is what it comes down to.
And hope that the voters recall in years to come that the intent of this money was for the mitigation related to Legacy Farms, that it was part of the host community agreement in which the money originally would not have had this level of oversight, because it would have just been under the direction of the school committee for a number of reasons. That has had to shift, as we're aware, but that's, you are correct.
Is that why you asked us to tattoo the MOU on our back? So in future years, people will know.
Forehead, forehead, so everyone can see.
Oh, okay.
So, and I think that's why the MOU will be important to remind people, because there's some institutional, you know, knowledge that could be lost if our whole board and the Board of Selectmen turns over, because this, the money will continue to be triggered to go into this account for every, what is it, blocks of 30, right?
Blocks.
Every block of 30 kids going forward will trigger an additional payment into this account, and up until one year past the issuance of the last occupancy permit. So is it four years out that they're projecting to still continue building, or did I make that up in my head? Isn't it?
You would know that answer better than I would. I mean, it's approximate, but, you know, it could go faster, or it could go slower.
But I think it is-
Sorry. One thing about the MOU is that it's only binding with the committees that actually engaged in it at the time. So if, you know, the Board of Selectmen changes, or the school committee changes, then, you know, so it is a nice historical document, but it won't bind forever.
So I think it is important, though, for viewers to recognize that, a lot of people have asked me, you know, hey, how's it going with all this growth? And here we are, you know, facing, over half of our anticipated growth for next year has already hit the books. So we're facing extreme growth, and people said, oh, but you have all that money, and they're wondering if we've used it, and I think it's important for people to know that we have been very fortunate in that we did receive, the town did receive payment from Legacy Farms, and there's a future stream of payments anticipated, because we've already met the growth targets. But in order for any of it to be accessible by a school committee, people have to go to town meeting and vote to create the stabilization fund, and vote to approve funding it with the money that we've received, the $500,000, and then vote to release $200,000 of it to us to access for next, this coming fiscal year. So if people are wondering why we haven't used the money, or, I think-
We don't have the money.
We don't have the money to use it unless they go to town meeting and vote. I think that's important.
That's a very good point. So, and just, I think back to your point that people are asking, you know, saying that we have all this money to mitigate the growth, but we have these students, they're coming in and they're staying for, you know, their duration in the public school system.
13 years.
The 13 years, if you look at $14,000 per pupil, and I know that our cost is hopefully a little higher than $14,000, but it, that money is not going to come anywhere near covering what the actual costs are. And it's important, too, you know, we want to maintain our public schools at the, people moved here for the public schools, they didn't move here for the public schools to fall apart because we couldn't fund them. So we've got to be responsible with the money we have, and we have to use it to offset it, and we're going to have some challenging things with our facilities going forward and the capacity in multiple buildings. The MOU did finally get all put together and off, but that's going to be probably five years out, even if we called in now.
You mean for Elmwood?
I'm sorry, for Elmwood. Did I say, I said SOI.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
As a lot of interest, yes, yes.
A lot of initials getting thrown around.
But, yeah, the statement of interest is going out, but it's, that's not going to help us if we have 200 kids come into Elmwood next year. Class size is important, and physical space, I mean, that's, you can't have billions of kids in one classroom.
That's true. I think we do a great job, I think, of protecting the classroom experience from this growth as much as possible, but even, even if we can do that, I mean, all the other, the hallways, the classrooms, the busing, the, I mean, the lunchroom, I mean, there's a whole lot of infrastructure that is just tight. It's really getting squeezed, and as we look at, like I said, over half of our anticipated growth is already in the schools or on the way.
It's a little bit daunting.
It's alarming, yeah.
It's daunting. And this was a big, for anybody who watched last night the Meet Your Candidates program, it was a big thing on people's minds, just questions as well as candidates, what they were saying, so.
People do have a lot of questions.
People have a lot of questions, and people are looking to us to do things responsibly, but also to keep the schools in the same level of excellence that we have come along for a number of years now. That's that.
We'll see everybody at town meeting.
See everyone at town meeting. And also just a plug as well for the Know Your Vote program that's happening on Monday at 6:30 through E-HOP. That's always a great program for people to get more information on things for town meetings, so.
And this will be covered, most likely, don't you think?
Oh, absolutely. I'm sure there will be, and Carol and I will both be there.
Great, great.
And I'm running sound.
Oh, fabulous.
I provide sound equipment for that.
So if I start to say something that's really bad, you'll make the sound go away.
I just mute it, yeah.
All right. And Susan as well.
And Susan as well, yes.
That's good, because there are a lot of things that I would not be able to speak to.
That's what we said. You'd know the answer to that, not that we would.
There's nobody left that way to look at either. It's like the buck stops there, Susan. You better have it.
It's May 6.
So at this point in our meeting, it is time for our next opportunity for public comment, unless anybody sees anybody lurking around the corners, we seem to have lost our public. We need like a cliffhanger to get people here, like, we're going to announce-
We need like a cliffhanger to get people here, like, we're going to announce something really exciting, and you have to be in the studio to get it.
We'll have a giveaway.
A giveaway, there we go. All right, and that brings us to items by consensus.
All right, so as superintendent, I recommend that school committee approve the items by consensus as outlined in your agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Jen.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I am also an aye, so that is, so moves, and then at this point, I would seek a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Amanda, second by Meg. You look like you were going to pause there.
Motion by Jen.
I, what did I say?
Me.
Because I was looking at you, I'm sorry. I am all kinds of mixed up tonight.
Feel free to give a man credit.
Motion by Jen, and a second by Meg, all those in favor.
Aye.
And we are adjourned. Our next meeting is next Thursday, May 2, at 6:00 PM. We are having an executive session at the beginning. As you will recall, we are at the high school library, and then again on May 6. So thank you all, and have a good night.
It's going to be.